And to call the village board meeting of Monday, October sixth, two thousand and twenty five. The order and we will begin with welcome. Trustee Booker.
Here.
Trustee Woods.
Here.
Trustee Owens.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Grease.
Here.
Trustee Thompson.
Here.
President Montgomery. Here. Um, we'd invite the audience to join us as we recite the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are not. Okay, then we will, uh, move forward with our, uh, agenda. As presented, and the next item is our, uh, reports from the professionals that report to know that in your packet. Are there any questions or comments? One thing that is not in the, uh, in the, uh, reports, I just want to acknowledge that on Monday, October thirteenth, Brown Gear will be hosting the I C D meeting, the intergovernmental council meeting that's held every second Monday at the month. You are all open and welcome. But then it's from Washington, and it'll be here all over at the beer garden. Uh, we will have lunch available, so if you're interested to get your opportunity to maybe meet some of the other, uh, municipality leaders and, kind of get a feel of what goes on in those wonderful meetings that we have every, that every Monday at the company. Um, any questions or comments about, um, any other reports? If not, uh, we will move on to our consent, consent agenda. And on our consent agenda, we have, uh, the minutes of, uh, September fifteenth. And I want to thank, uh, trustee Booker for chairing that meeting in my absence. Uh, and I'll consider approval of the updated fee schedule. Open those up in our packet. Any questions or? If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Is your second?
That's it.
It's been moved by trustee Woods and second by trustee Booker to approve this consent agenda. All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? I say the motion carries. Thank you. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the, uh, a new business. Uh, and we had, we actually have three items which are all related or connected to the North Shore Fire Department. I know all the cheapest they are. Um, so the first item is to consider revolution twenty five thirteen, resolution approving the single or multi-year capital budget to purchase large apparatus equipment from two thousand twenty six to two thousand thirty.
Just want to make sure this is one.
Yeah, I can do it. And as I'm doing that, I might recommend before Chief Whitaker does the, um, should be good, the three, uh, resolutions for him to actually do his budget presentation. Cause he needs to also go to Shorewood at seven thirty. So is that okay, President Montgomery?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's gonna be here after seven thirty.
You're gonna be well.
That means you're gonna be here after seven thirty, and I secretly I told you. All right, well, thank you for taking me early like I always said, I have Shorewood tonight. Uh, there's, I'll cover the budget first and then we'll do a few resolutions. So, um, annually, we just wrapped up our internal, uh, budget work and that goes to the fire department board. And that's September thirtieth. The, um, in just a review of twenty twenty five, we finished a ten-year long range financial plan, so twenty twenty six. Uh, moving forward for ten years. Uh, we are updating our strategic plan for the next five years. Uh, we're just finishing that out now. We implemented a new enterprise resource planning system, which, um, means E S N A, which you're familiar with as far as your financial accounting system. We brought that over. And over the time, uh, and these are bill resignation to retirements, we hired twelve, or better. So the job market continues to change and, um, we had a lot of retirements from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty four. That was sort of known that was gonna happen based on the life cycles. So we're hoping things slow down a little bit now as far as hiring. So twenty twenty six, um, as far as the budget, uh, the North Shore Fire Services Agreement, um, has a cap on municipal cost increases. That's C P I plus a half percent. So the C P I for our purposes is two point five percent. So the maximum that we could ask for municipal increase is three percent. Budget that was presented and reviewed by the board of directors, it's a three percent municipal increase in it. The Brown Gear contribution, so that's based on a formula of equalized value population and calls for service. Average over a five-year period, and it takes five years to actually implement a new number. So it's phased in over a period of five years. So it's really a ten-year cycle to get the, uh, actual number implemented. When you look at the numbers that are used for the calculation in five years to get there. That's done intentionally to phase things in. So it moves, uh, from twenty point oh two to twenty point one nine percent in twenty twenty six. You'll see this in the singular multi-year capital resolution we'll talk about after this. There's a significant increase in our capital costs due to rising costs for apparatus to provide the ambulances. There's a, you know, a fair amount of media coverage of that recently. Uh, that's industry wide, but we've seen forty to fifty percent increases in costs over the last four, four and a half years. That's, uh, better, not better specific, industry wide. So we'll talk about that in a little bit. Uh, calls for service in southern communities have increased almost forty percent since twenty fifteen. So we are looking at adding, we need to add capacity on the street. I'll talk about that also. So one of the long-range financial plan goals was to add capacity to add another ambulance. Most of that, forty percent of those calls are not populated calls. They are about seventy-five percent of our total call line. And this year we'll do about twelve thousand calls for service, maybe, who might have thirteen thousand for sure. So we want to add another goal to our, what we have on the street ownership. So part of the long-range financial plan is how do we get there? Now primarily a challenge there is the municipal contribution is usually the C, it's capped at C P I plus a half percent. Eighty-some percent of our total budget is for personnel. And when your personnel costs or cost of living are going up two and a half to three percent every year, you really never get to add on that with the cap of the C P I plus a half percent. So we have trouble using any sort of property tax or municipal contribution to add staff uh, without cutting significantly elsewhere. So we looked at other resources and for revenue. And we've identified two resources for revenue. One is our EMS fees that we talked about one of the resolutions. We are one who are behind market on what we're charging. And we did a study what it actually costs to provide a service. So we are increasing our fees, um, really significantly. We'll talk, that's a separate resolution we talked about. And that, that one source gives us capacity to add three positions, which gets us closer to adding that ambulance to the street. To add a twenty-four-seven ambulance, it takes about eight positions to cover the twenty-four-seven, two sixty-five schedule. There's two other stores, another resource we'll talk about, um, that we have federal Medicaid batch funding. That's coming, but we haven't gotten paid on that yet. Uh, we just want to make sure that revenue is there for, we count anything for our budget. So our total operating contribution around here is just over three million. And then there's a capital net service cost of four hundred and four thousand seven hundred and eighty. So for our major goals looking forward, um, part of the, this really gets in the weed, weeds on legislation, but expenditure restraint is a, is a revenue source to get in the state, uh, for keeping your expenses or your expenditures down. That doesn't line up with the levy cap that, uh, the state allows you to use for the fire, for joint fire department. So we're seeking expenditure restraint relief in the legislative side of the house. So the state matches those two numbers. Right now they, the best way to describe it is they don't match. So it makes it a challenge for Tyler and Derek to manage your budget when basically the state said, okay, you can bring a little more money into the property tax only for the fire department, which you can't. So hopefully, we have a bill that's on the table that we now need the state assembly to work together and actually meet that will happen before the session is done here, it's coming up soon. Talking about our strategic plan, uh, we are, we are accredited through a body called Commission on Fire Protection International. So about four hundred fire departments across the, in the world that are accredited. It's, that looks at matching your, what you're doing against best practices industry wide. There's three hundred best practices that we look at. Uh, we have a peer team that comes to actually assess us to make sure we're doing what we say we're doing. We have to go through that this year to keep our accreditation, so that way we come up soon. We did the B S N A Enterprise Resource Planning, we activated the financial plan, and we have a station in the Bay Side. That station was built in two thousand and four. And we're sort of getting the life cycle of H V A C, the, um, some of the systems that are in our school again. Just one more.
You, you have two more.
We covered that one. Oh, oh. Yeah, I think I heard.
Okay, there you go.
So a couple of challenges we faced as we brought this budget forward. Uh, in twenty twenty four, we jointly created a case manager position of the health department to help and manage some of our frequent flyers, we call them, or regular users. Uh, that position has been successful in bringing down some of those people that repeat call. Uh, but, um, the health department is running some financial challenges with their federal funding costs. That position was supposed to move over to the health department budget in twenty twenty six, you know, planned to transition. So that can't happen. So, uh, we had to look for some other sources to fund that. We have two grant applications out currently, hoping that they will fund that position for us. Uh, if not, we have, uh, some money we can go toward it. Our hope is that we'll go a little more toward the end of the year and actually go to, to, but that was a challenge we faced. Our health insurance, um, the W R S cost went up higher than, um, uh, a calm average, the health insurance cost went up sixteen percent. And so that's a significant increase. We're still bargaining with a couple of providers to try to potentially look at other providers. Uh, but that's out there instead of a challenge. And I talked about that limit to the C P I plus point five and nine expenditure strain. Go ahead.
That's it.
That's it. Do I take any questions? No question.
You said you're waiting on some funding from the Fed. Yeah, so check out an effect. Delay.
Well, uh, the twenty twenty-three money they owe us.
Um, you are already delayed, so.
Well, that money, you think is in the state's hands? We were actually told we were gonna get a check today. Um, so we're waiting, but we've been told that money are remitted to the state, so that shouldn't be delayed. But many services provided from the day they shut down, uh, a week or two ago, are completely shut down from Medicare, Medicaid, Obamacare right now. We, we have a fair amount of that from Medicare. Uh, questions? Okay, that trustee Grease.
Are, are there metrics you track for like the response time of the ambulance?
Yep. So we have, uh, different levels of call criteria that are based on what a caller tells the nine-one-one dispatcher. Uh, calls are, um, some calls we look at as a longer response time because they're less severe. Um, and then there's the more severe calls, the more severe calls, we target, uh, six hundred and thirty seconds on average. And, uh, or, uh, just over seven minutes ninety percent of the time. So there's sort of two metrics, there's a fifty percent act, some more than average, and then what do you actually do nine out of ten times? We generally meet those with exception of like severe or rather everything. Other questions? Okay, so. And we'll move on to our resolutions. Okay. So the first resolution you have is the singular multi-year capital budget. This by the, by design, this is a separate resolution, separate action from our normal operating budget or, um, our normal operating budget. This funds the big vehicles, the fire engines, the ladder trucks, the ambulances. That, um, looks at a five-year window for approval. So every year we add a year, but what's getting approved, it's a rolling five years. That's because we need to buy these trucks. We, I think at the board meeting last week, they just approved a truck that we won't see delivered until twenty twenty nine. So I can't sign the contract unless I know I have a revenue coming on the other side. So we have, we're planning four or five years out for purchase. Uh, three, four years, uh, let's say five to six years ago, those trucks, trucks took one year to get. So they pushed four year, three years out on delivery on these vehicles. There's a lot of chatter, there's some class action suits right now going on between municipalities and, um, majority owners of these larger companies that do build these things. That's still going through some of the court systems and, uh, Senate, U S, uh, Senate and Assembly have had hearings with the, with the manufacturers, there's so much, there are companies, they're all, there's some claims of collusion and things like that. I don't know if they're true or not. So, uh, those vehicles are, uh, scheduled for purchase, they're in the memo, it's a five-year period. So that's a series of ambulances, fire engines, ladder trucks. The municipal contribution is on page, on the bottom of page thirty-two, over the five years. That's based on the percentage that the municipality is paying each year. So those numbers will move slightly as the percentage of population with municipalities. For twenty twenty-six, this was a plan in large degrees, going back to twenty twenty-three. There was a plan put together that at twenty twenty-six, the number was gonna go up because of these cost increases. Uh, that's accounted for for twenty twenty-six. Uh, the, the money that we were talking about before, that check is supposed to come today. And we use that money to break down the total number for twenty twenty-six to try to manage the step in, so the number wasn't such a drastic change. So that number for twenty twenty-two, sorry, twenty twenty-six reduced from one point two millions to nine hundred and five thousand. So it brought, showed some municipality contributions down. So with that, um, I take any questions? This is required, we should reach the municipalities. All seven municipalities have to pass this at their board.
Trustee.
I had, um, I guess two questions. Uh, first one is like for the old apparatus, what, what happens to that?
Uh, majority of that, the value has gone up on that in the last couple of years because the lead time for this stuff is so long. Majority of the vehicles we're getting rid of, the fire engines are probably twenty to twenty-three years old by the time we cycle them off. So there isn't much value to those. A lot of them end up in Mexico, uh, or other countries. Uh, the ambulances, depending on their mileage, they may go either to Mexico or they get bought by contractors who use them for, uh, trucks to carry their, whatever they're, they're doing with their, it's a, basically a truck maybe to carry stuff around.
Then, then the second question is, um, in terms of you purchasing the, the newer vehicles, and it takes four or five years for you to get it. So when you get it in four or five years, are you paying the price for it then, or are you getting the price for it now?
Well, but we, we ran a price that is today. So like today I am working with the veteran redecorated contractors, the power of the case today. Okay. They have some clauses in there that talk about they're willing to escalate price, but there are some backend steps on that too, which you walk away from. All right, thank you.
I have a question. Resto Jackson.
Yeah, just looking at these numbers, the twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-seven is a huge jump. And maybe I missed what, what that jump is so huge, but didn't kind of blend out. There's more of a steady rate?
Yeah. So the, the jump for twenty twenty-six, the larger jump was supposed to be in twenty twenty-six from twenty twenty-five. We use the one-time revenue to offset the twenty twenty-six numbers to bring that number down. Uh, that is a intended jump to come for all these price increases that we're seeing. We've sort of held off on increasing what we need from the municipalities until now, uh, to allow themselves plan, time to plan that. But the big increase, and the twenty twenty-five number I don't think is in here, that's where the big increase is.
We're looking at twenty-seven, seriously jumping in.
Yeah. Yeah, so twenty-six was supposed to be the big jump, and now who's gonna stay, stay, stay as? So we're now sort of stair stepping from twenty-six to twenty-seven. Then twenty-seven moving forward should stay even about three percent. Hope I answered your question.
Yes, I got it. Question? If, if not, you need a motion to approve this resolution or to adopt this resolution.
I'll make the motion. Uh, I move that we approve resolution number twenty-five thirty. The resolution approving a single or multi-year capital for to purchase large apparatus within twenty twenty-six.
So second. Second. It's been moved by, yeah, trustee Thompson, the second by trustee Grease to, uh, approve resolution twenty-five and thirteen. Uh, we will, we will call both. Trustee, uh, Booker.
All right.
Trustee Woods.
All right.
Trustee Owens.
All right.
Trustee Johnson.
All right.
Trustee Grease.
All right.
Trustee Thompson.
All right.
President Montgomery.
All right.
Uh, the resolution is adopted. So we will move to item number B.
So item B is the fee schedule, uh, so similar to your municipal fee schedule. We have a fee schedule that, that gets added on your municipal fee schedule. This requires a resolution from each of the municipalities for this one. Five of the seven member municipalities have to adopt the fee schedule or approve the fee schedule, I'm sorry. This is an, you handly adjust our fees. Um, there's a couple of parts in the fees, there's the emergency service fees, there's the, uh, inspection fees, and then there is the, uh, the emergency cycle from record requests. We have a mental charge, people using magnets for CPR, people who want CPR glasses and with that. The big change here is for the ambulance transport charges. The other changes are, um, either minimal or three percent to reflect just the C P I cost there. The ambulance, uh, fees account for seventeen percent of our operating costs. So it's our second largest revenue source we have. We transport about five thousand people a year to hospitals. So there's a revenue source. A, about fifty-five to sixty percent is Medicare or Medicaid patients. So there's a limited payment on those because we're captive, we'll be charged, we cannot go out here for balance billing on those. The, um, the costs are usually what we've done traditionally, and we're looking to change. We have done what they call itemized billing, so in other words, there's a base charge for the ride to the hospital, and then we charge for supplies. So if we use an E K G monitor, there's a charge for that, we use oxygen, there's a charge for that. That model of billing has been traditional in the industry. This industry has shifted to what we call balanced billing, so it's a one, it's a bundle fee, I'm sorry, not balanced billing, bundle billing. One fee for the service. What they found is one, that's a better way to manage it for people that either work for us or a company on the billing side, like, because there, there's less room for error. And two, Medicare and Medicaid reject less claims when they're kind of bundled bill versus, uh, itemized bill. So it's less back and forth, so the revenue source is, the revenue grows higher. The, um, now we also did a study last year of what it actually costs to provide a service to see if our fees were recovering in cost. We were charging, and this is on page thirty-five of the packet, or twenty twenty-five fees, ambulance transport range of more of nine hundred and twenty-four dollars, and sort of lower, uh, non-emergency, like, non-life threatening to the high acuity fee of thirteen hundred and seventy-two dollars. When we did this study, that, uh, and we use methodology that's used industry wide and supported by federal Medicare and Medicaid. We found that our actual cost providing service was about nineteen hundred dollars. So we were under. We also, that, that top chart on page thirty-two, we looked at, okay, or thirty-five, I'm sorry. What's the average bill once we bring out the itemized supplies and everything? So that added about in sum anywhere from three to five hundred dollars generally. So our average cost range to actually book a bill, of course, we had, was between a thousand point seven and eighteen hundred dollars. Now, mind you, sixty-five percent of our patients Medicare and Medicaid pays, so we get anywhere from two hundred and eighty dollars to five hundred is pretty much what Medicare and Medicaid would pay. So we're not getting paid the cost of actually providing service. There's the whole other conversation. Um, the chart below, we then looked at other area providers that have moved to this bundled billing methodology. And you'll see that, city of Waukesha, Western Lakes, which is Oconomawag, um, that area. Waloto, so Greenfield, Franklin, and South Shore, we've all had moved to that methodology, with a variety of charges out there. So one other point weighs into this is there's a methodology in other states that are, um, and there's legislation looking, and Wisconsin's looking to do this, that would mandate, um, insurers to pay four hundred percent of the Medicare base rate for ambulance charges. And, and the other side of that was the ambulance provider can't go balanced billing patient. So in other words, there's a lot on the private payer's side. We might bill eighteen hundred dollars, your insurance company may say, eh, it's worth thirteen hundred dollars. Outside of the deductible and copay conversations, so they'll send you a bill for five hundred dollars because they'll say it's not usual and customary. That's a common problem, uh, or your network. Um, and for us to establish networks is tough because establishing networks is generally done based on volume. We don't know where our patients are coming from, or going based on call. So the other methodology that we looked at, and Wisconsin's considering legislation, is to, to say ambulance providers can charge four hundred percent of the Medicare base. Private insurance to pay it. That's all you can take ambulance provider, can't go back after somebody that has likes, has likes in other states. So we looked at that number two as part of trying to establish the new base rates for bundled billing. So the proposed base rates, after all, that work is on the bottom of page thirty-six. There's a significant decrease as you see, uh, but it gets us back to that nineteen hundred dollar, just the cost to provide service on average. Again, I'll remind you, sixty-five percent of our patients are Medicare and Medicaid, and generally they pay that, and we don't, we don't go after those people. So that is the change on the E M S side, if there are questions on that, because that's where the big changes.
I just had a question with, about, you know, acronyms, like, what is B L S, and what is A L S one, A L S two?
Yeah, good, good question. So B L S stands for basic life support, that's a non-life threatening service level. So in other words, it gets triaged by the nine-one-one dispatcher, our people look at it when they get there. That means you need to go get care, you don't necessarily need immediate care. We'll take you to whatever hospital you wanna go to. It's a lower, we can send a lower trained provider to that also. Advanced life support is A L S, and there's two categories, A L S one is, um, you might have chest pain, maybe a stroke, something where the provider has to do some sort of intervention, immediate. And then A L S two is where it's significantly serious, not breathing, major trauma. They might be giving you blood, something like that, so it's based on a level of care. Right, thank you. And just what?
And just what comes to a resident and non resident? Is it the state or is it town?
If you're, if you're basically paying taxes in seven northern municipalities, you're considered a resident.
Okay.
If you're outside of that, you're not.
So anybody in Milwaukee would be a non resident?
Yeah, now that definition has moved around based on lots of things, but right now that's the definition here.
Is that vice versa?
Everyone's different.
So like, in the city of Milwaukee, if I was in the city of Milwaukee and needed uh medical attention, would they charge me the non residents since I reside here?
I don't know off the top of my head, but there's a possibility of charging you as a non resident. Some communities in Milwaukee count as a non resident.
Yeah, that's what I'm wanting to hear. Um, then the other thing with all the discussion, and I'm planning that on a better, with all the discussions around Medicare, Medicaid, will make a shift in that create issues for our, the
Yeah, um, we've been told that Medicare and Medicaid uh were a state that got a a plan and
Just before.
And before that, uh, yeah. So we should be safe.
For now.
For now. But I think you guys
What, why now?
You all, why do you want to go back there? So now that eight o'clock?
Yeah.
Someone wakes up and says they want to do something?
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Okay. I think, I think it's relevant because as we hear conversations, you may think, oh, it's not going to affect us.
Yeah, we're, I so there's the whole, the money I was talking about, we haven't gotten paid on. That's, that's matching money from the feds for Medicare and Medicaid services. That money was in question up until about two weeks ago whether we needed to see that money or not, even though it was approved.
Yeah, okay. Um, any other questions? If not, we do need a motion to approve resolution twenty five and fourteen, the fire, the motion for fire department fees, the service schedule.
I'll make the motion. I move we approve resolution number twenty five dash fourteen. A resolution approving the twenty twenty six North Shore Fire Department fees for service schedule.
Is there a second?
Nothing.
It's been moved by trustee Woods, the second by trustee Owens to approve resolution twenty five and fourteen, approving the twenty twenty six North Shore Fire Department fee for service schedule. This will be a roll call vote. Uh, trustee Booker.
Aight.
Trustee Woods.
Aight.
Trustee Owens.
Aight.
Trustee Johnson.
Aight.
Trustee Greaves.
Aight.
Trustee Thompson.
Aight.
President Montgomery. The resolution is adopted. Item number C.
This is the simple, I'll get back as much time as I can for you. Um, this, so the uh joint fire departments like North Shore Fire Department are eligible for a de cap exception to the state property tax law amendments. They allow up to CPI plus two percent increases versus your normal property tax limit is tied to net new growth. So it's a significant benefit to the municipality as far as managing their budget and money increases. It does however require that a municipality that's a member of the department to pass a resolution saying, yes, we're okay with this, we we are in this annual. Which we can make it simpler, but uh legislative process of the state has never changed it. So this requires every, all seven municipalities that has this. It basically says that once you file your property tax filing with the state, there's a line on the worksheet that probably Derek fills out that backs out a number for the fire department, which gives you some property relief on your
Questions? No questions?
I do have a question. When you go above that CPI rate, yeah, is there a penalty from the state for doing it?
I don't know what the state calls it if you go above it, I just know you can't do it. I don't understand. And that's how that works.
Yeah.
We don't do it.
If you go over expenditures or anything, you
You lose expenditure experience. But for the levy limits, there's also a penalty. I don't know what the penalty is, but in the other program, expenditures training, you just, you can't get that funny anymore. For us, that's, now it's over three hundred thousand, so.
And then this, this levy cap for the state's purposes allows you to go to CPI plus two percent. Our internal gap is CPI plus a half, so we never get anywhere near the CPI.
Yeah.
Two percent. Now, there is a reason to go to CPI plus two, but that is a different story. I'll come and talk about it.
Okay.
Other questions? If not, we need a motion to approve this resolution.
I'm going to make a question. Uh, I move to approve resolution twenty five fifteen, authorizing an exemption to the levy limits for charges.
Exemption.
An exception to the levy limits for charges for the North Shore Fire Department pursuant to the two thousand five Wisconsin Act forty four.
Is there a second?
I'm saying.
It's been moved by trustee Greaves, the second by trustee Thompson to approve res- a resolution in the matter of optimizing the exception to the levy limits for charges for the North Shore Fire Department pursuant to twenty two thousand five Wisconsin Act forty four. This is a roll call vote. We will start with trustee Johnson.
Aight.
Trustee Greaves.
Aight.
Trustee Thompson.
Aight.
Trustee Owens.
Aight.
Trustee Woods.
Aight.
Trustee Booker. Uh, President Montgomery. Uh, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Sure, kind of everybody, go over. Yeah, hoping to buy his friend if he's okay.
Someone's great. He'll figure it out in Milwaukee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Pete.
Thanks, guys.
Uh, next item on our agenda is consider resolution twenty five act sixteen. A resolution approving the twenty twenty five Milwaukee County Hazard Mitigation Plan for the Village of Brownfield. Must be mandatory.
No. It's me.
Really?
Yeah.
After doing your budget report, you mean?
No, this is mostly actually, this is mostly Chief Nimmer and I. Uh, this one's pretty simple. Um, if we want future FEMA funding, we have to adopt the updated county hazard mitigation plan. So it's a long plan. We have the link in the packet if you want to read through it. Long story short, I don't, not much has really changed to the plan. It's just every few years they update it. Um, it was, it's supposed to be, I think, every five years. Um, and I think they went almost ten years without updating it. So we just need to pass the resolution so we have that approved as our updated mitigation plan. That's it.
Any questions? And this is back to the county plan, just
We're adopting as our own, yep.
If there are no questions, we do need a motion.
Need a motion. I move to approve resolution, resolution number twenty five sixteen, a resolution approving the twenty twenty five Milwaukee County Hazard Mitigation Plan for the Village of Brownfield.
There is a second?
A second.
It's been moved by trustee Thompson, the second by trustee Booker to adopt resolution twenty five sixteen, approving the twenty twenty five Milwaukee County Hazard Mitigation Plan for the Village of Brownfield. This is a roll call vote. Trustee Johnson.
Aight.
Trustee Greaves.
Aight.
Trustee Thompson.
Aight.
Trustee Booker.
Aight.
Trustee Woods.
Aight.
Trustee Owens. Uh, and President Montgomery. The resolution is adopted. Uh, next item, consider ice rink operations at Community Square for winter twenty twenty five, twenty six. You may not get a winner this year.
Yeah.
No, you can get a winner.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, good evening. Um, so layout from my view is three different options for this season at the ice rink. As most of you probably already know at this point that Milwaukee Winter Club will not be returning the capacity that they were last year. After their review of their budget, they just did not continue to financially support a Medicare of that size. And they found a new place to practice. Uh, if I remember correctly, it was the new rink that will be in the old, the new mountains.
Yeah.
So, um, option one would be that for the brinner personal recreation department would hold no operations at Community Square for being, and we'd be an ice rink for the community this year. Um, option two and three, um, I don't have the, so if we do move forward without taking number three, that would be the size of the ice rink. It would be provided by the Milwaukee Winter Club. It does have its charter in the system. So it'd be similar to last year where um it's just kind of frozen with the charter system. So it is a little bit more reliable than some of the other municipalities' ice rinks just because there's just a lot on cold weather where this has that system in place. Um, and it wouldn't need, they have bowling clearance, which would mean that we would be cutting down on staff time and cost. Um, so option two would be that the brinner recreation department manages the ice rink. Um, so this is kind of where it will, for each other kind of guess where we would be at cost price um as far as operations and the possible revenue that we would bring in because it's a completely different operation than we had last year. Um, but given the information we do have, um, we would probably be around the twenty thousand dollar ice range uh for operating costs. Uh, and this was just a consideration taking last year's um electrical costs, water costs, staffing. Um, but again, if you put it in the smaller rink, some of those costs would be lower. So this is like the extreme levels. Um, and additionally, this would have, we would have less hours of operations, but it would be similar to operating like a red arrow where people would pay for the skates that they need. If they have their own, then they would just get free some guys. So we would have staff, just one, um, being available to rent out the skates. So that would, again, cut down on staff time and that person would also kind of maintain the ice uh using shuttles and like a water post just to make sure that there aren't really major uh holes or blemishes. Um, and then, so like I said, the only revenue that would be coming in with this model would be the skate rentals and then you would potentially look to continue to do like the birthday party rentals, which were popular towards the end of the season where they got, you know, the skates, uh, worked with the beer garden to do kind of um group deals of like that. Um, and those were pretty popular and that is about the number that we had last year. So I would anticipate if we started at the beginning of the season, that could um be more. And then additionally, then we could potentially see some sponsors or donors um in that model as well. Option three would be that a third party would come to manage the uh space and they would cover all the costs and everything like that. Um, and we would really just be there as kind of like a facilitator, I guess, of that, just like getting a name for it. Or they would be coming in to bring in with Milwaukee Winter Club for the use of their rink. Um, so with this model, we would be pretty hands off. Um, we would support as needed, but in reality, it would just be the third party person to manage that. Uh, but as you can see, for option three, um, that would be kind of dependent on your possession, the issue that you think. Any question?
Question?
Yes.
Um, in your request for consideration, they said the recommendation, recommended motion. They said the recommended motion would be provided by staff. So what is the staff's recommended?
I have that.
I don't think
So if you were to look behind door number two or three, um, you know, the general recommendation would be to authorize staff to accept the donation from the Milwaukee Winter Club and initiate a smaller rink, ice rink at Community Square for the twenty five, twenty six winter season. Staff shall explore the idea with ABC Estabrook Inc. to manage the rink operations and bring forward an agreement to village board if terms are agreeable by both parties. Because we've discussed this concept with them and I, I, we feel there's some benefit to it, but there are some things that will probably happen in the next month that will really determine if that's really the right fit or not. So that at least gives us some general direction to know that we can let the winter club know um that they can donate the rink and, and we can also start negotiating those terms with ABC Estabrook.
When you say donate the rink, you're speaking of this rink in uncovered.
Yeah, they would give it to us for, it wouldn't be us ours permanently, but they would put it there for at least this upcoming year and potentially future years for us to use.
Question, how popular is skate? Ice skating that's not covered? I mean, last year, I think the whole deduction was coming to a covered facility where you know, you had seating and you could, you know, whatever experience we experienced, but it, the experience is different. So I'm not a ice skater, but I've watched and seen, but what I, I don't understand you now, but
Sure, um, so it could be looked at two different ways. I think a lot of people are looking for reliable ice and they're looking for that opportunity to skate, whether it's covered or uncovered. Um, and the other part of that too is that um it kind of creates an alibi a little bit if it's uncovered, right? Like if you think about it with the lights, skating in the dark, like under lights or like the stuff, like stars and things like that. A lot of other municipalities have uncovered and have a lot of success. I mean, Red Arrow is successful and they don't have covered cheap ice as well. If you think of the landing of Mark in Chicago, there's just also uncovered as well. But you've seen a lot of models there where people are, who's still going to those places, even though that it's not covered.
Round fellow.
Yeah, exactly. Mm-hmm.
Um, when this, when, uh, is the sixteen weeks? When would it start?
Uh, that as soon as we would get the ice rink up and operable, um, I think I've looked for the beginning of November. And then just because of how long it kind of got in March, that's, we would probably end in February. So November through February. And that's pretty consistent with some of the other seasons as well.
Yeah, can you kind of remind us in terms of the fiscal implication last year or early this year? What do we walk away with in terms of profit or deficit? I can't remember.
Um, I believe it was only like a ten thousand dollar deficit. But again, that was largely part of the financial support of the Milwaukee Winter Club. Um, but that was, you know, the burden that we had hurt with. Um, and I think when I presented that back, um, after the season finished, a lot of that had to do with staffing and just trying to figure out that game. So we would have adjusted our staffing model, we probably would have had a lot.
And that also included some one time initial capital cost tool, like the, the skates and that. And so, so yeah, so some of those have been taken care of.
And for the storage trips, some things like that too, so.
Where's all this done then?
Uh, I love my TPW building. Oh, not in his space, our space, for sure. It's a little fancy.
Um, trustee Owens.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about the twenty twenty four experience. What one did. Uh, my question is, is how many Brown Deer residents actually used rink last year? It seemed to be that we were doing this for this um, this organization, for them to practice and do things like that. So I'm just wondering, how many Brown Deer residents actually?
So, yeah, for sure. So we didn't actually uh do donor and first resident uh rates, so we only have total amount. Uh, but we probably saw during open skate, uh, twenty plus people per open skate.
Um, you mentioned um the rink that Milwaukee County has. Do you know what their expenses are or what their profits or losses were? And I know they've been there for hundreds of years, so.
Yeah, for sure. So I don't actually have those exact numbers, um, but I know that they can charge like three dollars per rental. Um, but I think their model is probably took a little bit different because they do have a lease agreement with a coffee shop as well that would, I think, probably offset some of those costs of the JP and like maintaining that ice rink.
Other questions? Other question.
So what would it look like financially if the third party were to operate the ice?
Um, that would depend on the negotiations that we, uh, just dealt with them, but I think for us, it would cost us a thing. And it would be all the costs would be transferred to the operator.
Just to give a little more information what that would look like, yeah, I mean, all the liability, you know, we would try to push to them as far as or the ownership of, of the management of it. So hiring the staff, managing the staff, managing the rink on a day-to-day basis. Uh, a lot of the programming, things like that would shift to them. And that's where, you know, we would just set up some type of contract that would pretty much be a net neutral, uh, to the village. And then that would, you know, give them the, the ability to do it how they would want in conjunction with their, their service and, and business in the, in the winter months.
You know, my, my question is more so related to revenue and expenses. It sounds like going into this project, we know we're gonna have a deficit. Question is how much of the deficit? For me, how much can this be covered by the department where if there's a deficit? Because it comes out of your operating budget.
Sure. So, um, that would be under the facilities fund, which does receive tax levy support and it also has from your pond, um, the community center and a brand goes into that, but covering up the community center. So, um, and we do have a significant fund allowance for that, um, fund right now. So, I mean, I can't necessarily like give you an exact number off the top of my head, but I think if we were to go with, you know, option two, like we would be okay for this year, but then that's where, you know, we would have to really consider, you know, best strategic strategies of, you know, diminishing that deficit moving forward or, um, look to get rid of it, this idea altogether. But I think that's part of the larger discussion of what we're gonna do with Community Square, um, which is gonna be part of, you know, the next two to three years. Um, but it really falls on what comes next with the beer garden space. Cause that's where, you know, that decision starts.
Yeah, I just find the way, the benefit of doing it or not doing it, because if we don't do it, well, people aren't used to it. Now we come back with another phase, okay, we're gonna do a cover and people get used to it and they expect it next year. So if we don't do it, we've got to. So I, I just think that if we're gonna invest in it, I think we have to have a long-term plan in place. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, for sure. So this would, that's where kind of that decision for Community Square comes into play. And like I said, there's a lot of like balls kind of in the air, like we're juggling to try and figure out what that looks like. And then, like I said earlier, that kind of starts with, you know, the decision that is gonna be discussed during close session this evening. So, um, we do have like the corp that we can call back on, um, and, you know, given the funding, I guess, uh, or that out there right now, um, you know, part of the discussion for that, those funds would come for Community Square in the first place. So that's a bigger, you know, vision topic, but I think that's where, you know, we have to either do this one from here and hope that we have a bigger picture in place for next year and have the funds to do it.
It's related to the building itself, because I, I mean, as a kid, I used to go skating in Milwaukee County Parks. We used to always go into the building, you know? And I know they have mats and everything down to protect the floors because those ice skates can easily damage the concrete. So are you thinking about how you protect the use of the building in and out or is the building gonna be used at all?
Again, uh, so that is kind of dependent on where the conversations go over the next month and then also just, you know, between option two and under that one.
Yeah, but, but for year one, we did have those mats to protect the floor. And that's don, that's donated from the winter club to us as well.
And they all will all choose those now they get.
Thank you. So Danny, a couple of questions. In this projected expensive adoption two, you said regrading of Community Square, what's the cost? And set up a KTM, um, is there a projection on the cost on yours there and DPW?
There is not, just because, I mean, we would have to either assess that once the tur, like the turf is off and weather enough to, that we could do it or we would have to bring in a contractor. Uh, but we, you know, we weren't gonna necessarily take that step until we knew which direction to go.
And then to regrade it, we don't have a cost, but projection of whatever cost.
Are we referring to this tent, this, uh, small?
Yeah, this, this small.
Okay, so there would be nothing. We would set that on top of the turf. So.
All right. Um, trustee Owen or trustee Johnson?
In the last survey there, was there any mention of the ice rink, any questions about everything?
We, we had a general question about Community Square and Ice Rink in there. It was, uh, asking kind of in general, like, um, I think it was like, I can't remember if it's like the cleanliness type question, but we.
Um, but we didn't really get into specifics. We just kind of wanted to get a good base of what facilities we were using. And then the hope in the next survey would need to dive a little bit deeper into some of those facilities.
But there's a question that asks about like, here are all of our facilities, have you used them or not? And then there's like, part of it is, I was not aware or having used and Community Square in the rink was like one of the highest where people weren't aware. So I think it shows an opportunity for the village to do more marketing communication to promote it. Um, cause like, you know, it's a newer park space. I mean, people who have been around, they know Ferry Chasm and uh, they know Village Park because it's been here for decades. So that's where there's just an opportunity that we have to educate more on it.
Um, question, we're gonna make option B, the third party, the third party that would come in to manage, this is a, uh, uh, an experienced rink management operations company or is?
That's the, that's the beer garden provider right now.
Oh, is that person, is that?
No.
They're not experienced.
No, but the, the rink that we're talking about is not very sophisticated. I mean, really all it requires is someone to, you know, go out with a broom and a shovel to clean off the surface. So.
Apparently the Milwaukee Winter Club has offered to help lay facilities in that tree, just so it's basic operations to get going.
We have not, uh, taken a vote. Uh, I guess the one thing I just hearing and listening to people in this community yet. Last year was, you know, we got this, we got the top of the line at that point. And within a year, it's gonna be nowhere near. I think we'll hear it significantly about what happened, who, why we had the same level. I don't know what direction of what we're going, but I'm just, you know, anytime you take, I think about when we didn't take it away, it was not planned to be there long-term. The, uh, what was it called? The containers.
Yeah, no, that's a good one. That's a good comparison.
It was never, never meant to be there long-term. And as soon as that went, we, it, it went further.
Yeah. They didn't want to say nothing to do with the village.
President Montgomery, as, as you all think through this, you know, the, the one point trustee Johnson raised, uh, an important comment about long-term plan and that's where I would circle back as a reminder, part of Dan, Danny's presentation was the corp. You know, we spent significant time updating comprehensive out to our recreation plan. And for, for the Community Square space, we approved the concept of an ice rink. And so that's where, you know, to, to respond to that, that's where when we did a lot of civic engagement in that, we, that's where we got the most positive feedback was that kind of concept. So, so I can tell you on a long-term planning basis, that's what we're trying to accomplish based on the feedback. Uh, for you as a board tonight, you know, I think you just need to determine, you know, as we continue to find the right size and the right fit, at what point do you pivot? And I can just tell you, working with, you know, Danny and her team a lot, they poured a lot of energy in attempting year one. Um, and yeah, it's gonna probably look different in, in year two, um, if we go with this plan, but this is where we're trying to get the right size and the right fit. But, um, you know, that's where we just wanted to be transparent with where the financials, you know, may look. And I think it's a conservative estimate, but, uh, uh, on both ends, because, you know, we would rather get good news rather than not. But I just want to let you know on the planning efforts, you know, for a few years now, this is what's been part of the plan. Um, and, and, you know, I think we're just trying to find that right balance.
I have a question. Uh, we build these apartment buildings. Uh, have you found that people of the Livers and Gillans that they utilize in the square? Or is it people in the community that spend the year there, it's in high school or whatever?
Sure. Um, I know for our fans, if we got a wide range of people, we had people from Victoria, we had people from, you know, other, or for communities, especially because they had ties to the winter club. Um, but I can't say specifically about like specific, like where they came, whether they were, you know, apartment residents or none. Um, but I do know that, um, it was pretty well received by residents. I, that's totally feedback, I guess I can say, I didn't perceive any negative feedback about the ice rink from any of the residents. Pretty regular basis.
Uh, there are questions or comments? So we don't, do we, do we take a vote?
Well, yeah, we do. So just to circle back, one of these options. So opt, just to summarize, option one is, you know, based on what you heard in the presentation, you know, we're not gonna proceed this as an option. We, we tried it a year. And if from your perspective, you know, we're gonna look for some alternative use um, in, in, in the Community Squ- Square space. You want to proceed with the, the smaller rink, options two and three would incorporate if option two would basically be managed by Parks and Recreation. And the third option would be under the management of the beer garden vendor, assuming that we can get a deal done. If we got a deal done, we would provide that to you with the motion I recommend, uh, provided to you earlier, what that language is basically stating, if we did not get an agreed upon negotiation, then we would kick back to option two. That's where you as a board that you can pick, you know, whichever recommendation or, or whichever option. Uh, but those are the, we're hoping at least tonight, the board approves one of the three options.
That was their motion for one of the three options. Uh, for you.
Early on, Danny said that, hey, we're gonna go in a close session. Isn't that going in a close session tied to this based on?
The motion that you're setting tonight does not, or like, uh, because this is just on the, the rink itself. Uh, the, what we're going into close session tonight is gonna be more about the, like, um, capital improvements as far as funding that. If you, as a board, and I'm gonna defer to Nathan, your opinion on this. Another option is we could not take a motion, wait till close session, come out of a, close session and make a motion then. How do you feel about that, Nathan? Any opposition to that?
No, because it's noticed and you could just defer, uh, decision on the matter until later on the agenda, perfectly fine. Yeah, I don't see.
So I, if, if you all want to wait until we have that discussion, I, I, yeah, I, I think that would be also a, a good pathway.
You could just ask if there's unanimous consent to move the matter on the agenda down to below the.
So is there unanimous decision to move item number E to, uh, for consideration after close session? Yeah, yes, no opposition. Okay, probably will do. Thank you.
Perfect. Yeah, I think that's good.
Moving forward to discuss strategic planning for Parks and Rec Department. Are you back?
So before Danny starts, so as you know, we've been giving some strategic discussions. Most of our departments have done. I think Nate might be the only one that still has to go, but everyone else is gone. So we'll get Nate in before the end of the year. Uh, but Danny put together the memo. A lot of this she's gonna talk about during the budget as far as the twenty-five and twenty-six initiatives here. So I think, oh, are you gonna touch on that briefly? Okay, so we're gonna start there, but most, most of the conversation will be kind of a three to five-year vision. So, okay, go ahead.
Oh, can you just go back to a little bit?
Oh, sorry. Like that?
Sure.
Okay.
All right. So I will probably touch on a few big things more in depth for the budget presentation. Uh, but I think, yourself, I'm so sorry. Um, I think it's important to know, like in twenty twenty-five, that we brought a lot of new partnerships and programs to the personal recreation department as well as, um, some new like revenue sources, um, specifically with the pine rentals and, um, the, uh, partnership with Board of Outdoor that and with those two revenue sources, those are both going into the facilities fund. Um, so we're pretty proud of the work that we've done in twenty twenty-five. All right. So twenty twenty-six, um, I'm kind of using as a stepping stone, building a foundation for the three to five-year strategic plan. Uh, so for twenty twenty-six, um, we really are just trying to, um, navigate, uh, just the new parks and to feed, uh, and just continuing to, uh, maintain programs and services that we already provide. So the biggest component or the two biggest components that I feel that will, uh, get us to, um, building a really good strategic planning vision is to start out with a needs assessment. So this is similar to, but this is going to really highlight what services, um, Brown Deer is providing. And it also kind of looks at not just us, but what, it's kind of like a market analysis essentially, where it's looking at what you're doing, what you're providing, but then what other businesses and organizations are providing as well. Um, and then it also highlights some of those gaps in the services within the community and a little bit outside of it. So this could really, you know, set the tone of, uh, you know, kind of guiding us what, what's, um, programs we should continue to offer, which ones we could consider based off of trends. Um, and just kind of moving forward with being a little bit of more well-oiled machine as far as like, not only just providing different services, but maybe like expanding on the services that we already have. So if our program is doing really well, how can we, you know, build days into the schedule? How can we get more swimmers into the pool, things like that? Um, so that would be for the programming side of things. So, because we already did the facility side of things with the court. Um, and then the next thing would be to do a conditions report. Um, I don't have that in record of the retirement of our doing one before, but this was where we would, um, look inside that all of the equipment, all of the facilities and really get a good sense of, you know, what the condition of everything is. So, and then just rate it from good, fairly good, needs repair kind of thing. Um, and then that would be able to help better guide maintenance schedule and putting together a plan for the CIP. Um, that every other year, we are proposing that we get three hundred thousand dollars from the CIP. And then that with this report, then we'd be able to better guide that, that three hundred thousand dollars we built towards. Uh, so this includes everything from picnic tables to HVAC systems to the forator, to the pool pump, um, big, small, everything.
So we don't have, uh, a report that was used before?
I have not. I have not seen one in a folder at all, so that means that we've kind of just been fixing things as needed, or I've done. You know, five, six picnic tables every single year, just to keep them up to date, and I've worked with EPWR. Even though, but there is.
No, it was something, because we improved, like, the waste, the garbage cans.
So, but that's, but then like specific to parks, the rec, like, we have, we don't have something like that.
You don't have that, or but.
Yeah, someone probably asked.
We had. Well, I'm aware of it.
But yeah, for sure, but specifically to Parks and Rec, we don't have one or.
Several years ago on the, the capital improvement plan, we had nothing for Parks and Rec either for a number of years too. So that's where there, Danny and her team have been trying to make, you know, concerted effort that there's that routine replacement in that.
Oh, I get it, and I understand if it ain't documented in capital, but I know. That we paid for things, and we presented it to the foundation, in some cases, to give money to purchase things.
Okay.
Anyway.
But where, who know? Matthew, I don't know, if, do you remember any of that at all? No, okay.
And I'm the only one up here that probably looked when I came off.
Yeah, well, and Danny, when you were with Chad as, as the special, you don't remember anything that Chad would use there.
Yeah, for sure. So just because he would come before the board doesn't necessarily mean that there wasn't some in place for those things, um, I. Well, I'm not gonna speak ill, but like I think that there are a lot of things that like there are works. That's stones in place, so this is where, like I said, like, this is really an opportunity to set the fa- the foundation. To implement new strategies and systems that can be used moving forward. Um, and really make sure that, you know, there is some maintenance, maintenance, um, rather than kind of like fixing things when they break. Obviously, things happen, things break when they're not supposed to, there's the blunder, but. You know, this will help better guide that CIP.
Well, I get that, and I guess question, uh, and this may be for Derek or Tyler. You know, when you are dealing with your budget and audits, and you depreciate things, stuff like that would not be included?
It would be.
So we're getting to that now. Which means we had audits done years ago, we had that stuff. You weren't here, you weren't here, I'm just.
Yeah, I don't have an answer.
Well, I'm. I do recall, cause I've been on there for a while. And I do remember the years where there's really nothing really allocated to park.
I, I get that, I'm just saying that we, it's, it's not on yet, let's move on.
I will also say, like, for example, the tornado, um, I believe that was purchased, the new one was purchased in about. Twenty fifteen.
For what?
The tornado for the pond, so it certainly, it's all worry, um, that was probably purchased in twenty fifteen. And, you know, now that's coming up to the end of its life cycle, um, unfortunately, we did lose it in the flood, so we have to replace it regardless. Um, but that would have been of those CIP items that we would have looked to do. So it's stuff like that, we're, you know, coming up with a schedule, uh, just because of the wear and tear and some of those items, so. Um, that's basically kind of the foundation that we're hoping to set moving forward, um. And then based on what the conditions reports and like the needs assessments to, um. Work on creating a really concrete plan of not only implementing more items from before. Uh, but also to slowly implement some of those things off of the conditions report as well, and really kind of spaced out. Needs first wants, um, and really developing a good solid plan that's sustainable. Um, and then, like I said, uh. In general, to like earlier, I mentioned that like funding opportunities are a little bit. Harder to get these times, so as a department who has three special weathering funds and most of our money is. You know, cost recovery based and not tax levy supported, we really need to, uh, continue finding. Cost recovery strategies that work not only for our community, but for our department. And really deep diving into, um, you know, what that looks like. So some of those options are, you know, putting credit card costs back onto the consumer, cause right now we're not doing that. Um, so, like, if they pay with credit card right now, we're eating the cost of.
What, is it three percent?
I, yeah. Um, and that really has taken a lot out of our, our rec funds specifically. Um, we worked with Derek this year to divide some of that cost from first, or the recreation fund to the facilities fund. Because we do take credit card transactions over at the pond, and we also take them for, uh, rentals. So we did, you know, switch some of that, so that was one of our strategies this year. Uh, but really kind of try to figure out some other ones too, um. And then continuing to build partnerships and relationships with other organizations to get sponsors or give donations. Um, and then we would like to, you know, overall goal is to maintain tax levy support through those funds. Rather than increasing them, so again, that's gonna, we're gonna have to find other ways to supplement those funds if we're not covering those costs with. Programs or.
Well, I guess the question for me in terms of credit card is. Wouldn't it be more costly staff handling transactions, cash or check? Or anything?
Uh, it depends, I mean, with staff, you have user error, but, so like, I mean, that gets very far staff. Um, we do still take cash out, out at the pond, and we've seen that significantly drop, um, cash. Cash usage, but we've also seen user error drop too, so, um, I think it is.
But I mean, in terms of, and I don't know what the total cost of the credit card be, but say it's. Over the years, ten thousand, if you went back to that processing. Checks or cash, or people gotta come in. How much time? Did you be paying staff to do that as opposed to just having credit card? I, I don't know.
Sure, I think because you still are using our software system, you're gonna still see some of those. Costs anyways, just because we're paying for the, the software as well, so you're kind of paying the full bet. So that's where I think our goal is to bring it to committee level and then bring it to the board, that's for, for, for the credit card cost. Any questions on the first two or three items?
Uh, Bethany James.
Yeah, I think Park and Rec is a very important piece to the community, really gives a sense of, you know, I mean. If you had your opportunity to have the dream budget, what would it? Do it, but see. You need to add for three hundred thousand every two years, but you're also increasing the activity from three parks to six park. And I don't know if this includes the pickleball court in the future, but, uh, I think. If you come into a community, you wanna have a sense of community, you wanna have things to do. Rather than people leaving around here, this is kind of things to keep people in around.
So the question, so what would your? Um, I think, so that's kind of hard to get certain, because I think there. I mean, I think we're doing okay with the budget average now, but that doesn't mean room for improvement. And we are gonna continue improving and continuing to offer the services based off trends and wants and needs of the community. We're gonna need to considerably increase that budget. What that looks like, I can't say for sure, just because of inflation and things like that, so if we're gonna continue developing. Parks that bring people into this community, um, and we just spent almost three million dollars. We did spend three million dollars on ten month parks, so if you wanna continue, you know, building that status of parks like that. I mean, that's where normally right there, so if you wanna ask me like, how much I want, like, because I can't.
Yeah. Okay, cause we get, we get finances.
Right, yeah, so that wasn't even meant to necessarily, you know, that we had, you know.
So, do you know their?
But I think that's where my, you know, I come back to you, like, you know, we need to really consider what those. Costs, recover strategies look like, and it has to be sustainable for the community. Um, because, you know, our demographic is very special, we're very diverse, and we wanna make sure that we're providing sort, like, services. That meet the needs and like, we're not creating more barriers for those people to participate. So, you know, we offer the free community events, well, for the free community events, that makes the funding has to come from somewhere. And if the, this was an organization can no longer support them, then that means we have to fall down on tax dollars. So, I mean, that really comes down to what, not with the board, but what the community wants to be moving forward. And, you know, that's where the community survey comes into play, that that's where, you know, they rank their priorities.
Yeah, cause we have all these new housing things going up, and mostly maybe families. They need to be able to, like I said, keep these families here active and proud here.
Yeah, absolutely, and I think we are doing a good job of doing that, I mean, with the football. Aren't ten mile, like, we're providing the, the free services, the free opportunities for recreation, um. So I think we're moving in the right direction with outdoor spaces, now we need to kind of switch gears now a little bit and think about the program. Cause we've been kind of in the last two years, kind of focused on that outdoor portion, so now I'd like my department to set that with more programmable.
Ten Mile Park, quick question.
Yes.
The one.
The contract? The contract?
Yes.
Yes.
So. Is it skating, is it skateboard, what is it?
Anything with wheels, so long as, right, Matthew, right, you can use skateboards on the track too, right? Or like strength scooters.
Uh, so yeah, there's a ton of people are using it.
I know.
That's my max, yeah, exactly, it's mainly, it's mainly for bikes, you take your bike and you can swing around this thing. Uh, but it ain't skateboards. You could if you wanted to, but.
You could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wouldn't, I would break my leg, I'd probably break my leg on the bike. But I feel like if you sit around singing, kids they take, there will be a max bikes and they're doing all sorts of.
That's a little different than a skateboard, cause I was over there, the young man came with his skateboard, so he was going on the. And when he found out who I was, he said, I'm gonna get a skateboard chain, I said. It looks a little big, so.
No, it is different, it is technically different, the contract is mainly for bikes.
Right.
You know, it's, it's for bikes. Is that, are you gonna, if somebody's gonna choose to ride their skateboard on it, I mean, yeah.
Do it, his name is Jay, so many calls.
I have definitely seen a bunch of, well, just his, his story, so there's a group of kids and Jay might be one of them.
Yeah, he's the last.
Yes, so our BBW shop was over there and we go in the morning, they, they'd come and have supplies. They were pouring their own concrete back from the yards. Kudos to them, I mean, great kid.
Be careful, they're gonna do the same.
Right, we'll probably have to watch it, I did have to politely shoot some, uh, young gentleman out off the, the freshly, uh, poured. Basketball or pickleball courts, they would scuff it up, we did put some fencing around there, keep some of the kids off of there. There is a very active group of kids that like to use that space for skateboarding.
The last part of the strategic plan is to be able to sustain, comport that T in the department. As I know that, you know, we have three active parks right now, uh, but we're going to be getting six. So I'm prepared for each of the programming and parks, uh, that's usually unheard of, you usually have separate, you know. Supervisors per each section, um, so we're kind of unique in the sense that we don't have a supervisor per section. Uh, of responsibility.
So our six star, Hanson?
No.
Bear Canyon.
Bear Canyon.
The Village?
Village.
The Community?
Oh, yeah.
Community Square, Ten Mile Park.
Badger Meter.
Oh, you count Badger Meter, and then the, the new, what is it called? Is that?
North Shore Rotary, is that where you're thinking of?
I'll be in Badger Meter.
Uh, so it's on that day, but, uh, there are a lot of people that access that, uh, for. So we just started that partnership with Port Outdoor, so they have kayak launching on that every weekend, people go in there for fishing. Um, so it's a pretty well-used park actually, and people go sit there on lunch break and things like that, so it, it's a pretty used park.
Yeah. Yeah, they do have to be over to Hanson and, um, Al Godwin, which is on Milwaukee County, but there, that round here.
Badger Meter, if you see like cars and stuff parked there, it's always a little like deceiving because all the activities happening way down at the river. You know, so like everyone, they just park up top, and you just have this kind of green space.
Yeah.
Parking, you know, we're neck, cause everyone, they, they're all down at the river, so they'll haul their kayaks down there, fish. I've watched my kayak out there.
Yes.
Other, other question. Other question.
I just, you know, I don't doubt there's a need to, uh, increase that T E's. But how we, how we help pay for it?
Exactly, so that's where it's kind of a long-term vision, and I, we talked, and I talked about, you know, what that might look like. There's some other priorities for state-based part, uh, but then that's where I hope that some of those. Cost recovery strategies can come into play where they can, rather than, um, tax. Uh, taxes, maybe some of those special revenue funds could offset some of the cost. And it might not necessarily be a full FTE right away, it might start with a more time coordinator. Which would be specific to like, you know, the facilities fund, and then that would pay for that coordinator. And then potentially as things progress, then that will become a full FTE with maybe tax levy support.
And currently, we agree with that.
Correct.
Yeah. Other questions? If not, there's no, this is just discussion, thank you. Things happening here. And so now we present the twenty twenty-six proposed budget, capital, TIF, shared services, special revenue fund, and utility.
I'll kick it off, but we're gonna have a, a team effort here as we go through the proposed budget. Um, so, uh, tonight, it's gonna be focused on capital, TIF, utilities, and special revenue funds. Uh, before we get into that, um, some changes that Derek and I wanted to highlight to everyone, it's all good news. Um, we've got additional shared revenue on expenditure restraint and transportation aids. So that's gonna allow us to be able to lower the vacancy factor in the police department back down to point five, which is where we want it. That's great news, um, chief, um, and, and the, his department, um, wanted to increase the Exxon contract. Uh, for, for their cameras and that, for some, uh, uh, additional services. So we're able to accommodate that, and for three years straight. Um, I said no to the budgeting module, but this would be a really helpful thing for Derek and the department head, so we're gonna include that back in. Um, we had some small changes with some of the consolidated services that we heard. But all in all, uh, there's just over forty thousand on the levy, uh, increase that we can remove back. So instead of three point nine nine, we're currently at a three point six two percent increase on the levy. So, all that good news. Um, so we're gonna skip Danny, I know you've had a lot of fun tonight, um, you're next up on your budget. So, we're, we're gonna kick up, so, cause we knew Danny was gonna be here tonight, part of hers is in the general fund. So she's gonna capture real quickly the portion in the general fund, and then we'll skip down to her special revenue funds. Go ahead.
Alright, so, uh, twenty twenty-five accomplishments, we retained all three FTEs, which means that I had twice supervisors. For almost two years now, which is great news, Derek, because we had a few years of turnover. So we're finally getting into a group of things, um, and we really built a really good team of the variables. Uh, we continue to develop partnerships with community groups and organizations, including the Mr. Public Tech up from the school district. Um, we continue to coordinate these special events. We completed the background in social project that was part of our, we'll call it D W, uh, vision of Ten Mile Park. Uh, the agenda of Ten Mile Park is set later in October. And we have started planning for the new part project of the North Shore.
What's harvest best?
Uh, so that was this past weekend, uh.
Tree. Wrong, tree.
Pumpkin treat.
So it's a little more than just a pumpkin treat. We do have games activities and um and food shops. Before the actual pumpkin treat portion, uh and probably a hall over or close to three hundred people.
What, what, cooperating?
Yeah.
Other than that.
Yeah, that's right. All right, twenty twenty-six, uh like I mentioned, the new perk development. Uh, in the state areas, old state areas, living lot or self-holders, whichever you want to call it. Um, and then we continue to roll the long-term conversations and implementation across the board. And then we want to continue to build a strategic and sustainable.
For the general fund operations, there was really no significant change in her budget. We'll skip to that since she's up here, to keep you up here, we'll skip to the park facilities fund.
All right, um, so. We renamed this the facilities fund because like I said, it houses the community center as well as the parks. And then uh potentially, you know, like this community square and then Badger Meter, we had a few more operations. So the facility fund made a little bit more sense, uh easy fix. And then we continued to maintain the soccer fields out of the old court, uh the youth park rentals. Um, and then like I mentioned earlier, our new partnership with Port Outdoors. They ran kayak trips out of Badger Meter River Park. And then they also worked with us on a few, or community events that we posted at the pond. Um, and those went well, um.
When you do the rentals for the community center, do you separate if they rent other stuff like? Did we rent what, the night system?
Yep.
And I don't know what else you rent.
Yeah, so we got a like backdrop frame and some easels and things like that. Just because those were some very like highly requested things. Um, but I think we mainly uh just do the microphones and just the projector. Those are the most wanted for sure.
Do we separate that from?
Mm-hmm.
Cause we just, is this the first year we get nights?
Uh, I believe we started that last year.
Yeah, um, be nice to know what that's generating. Just the, you know, I'm sure the covenants is cost on that.
Yeah, for sure.
Danny, you just wanna make a note sometime. You can send me an estimate of what that would be.
And then we think about, think about other things that people might want.
Yeah, we thought about, um, so again, for like the conditions for parts, talk of things like that, some of those tables are starting to. Run out of legs, ha ha ha. Um, and we need to start replacing those and um. Part of that discussion to like take pause, you know, like people, you know, forget some or, you know, they rather than purchasing their own. Like that's potentially an opportunity for another additional like rental stream. Um, and we just got some tablecloths, but we have to think through that a little bit more just because if they get dirty, who's cleaning that and hardly being.
You're trying to bring back to the people.
Right, but you know, we have to really think through that a little bit and think through.
The longer that is right there.
That's true.
I would only say if we ever get that, get the tablecloths that are already uh wrinkly. Because then you don't have to hire them, you don't have to keep them, get washed.
Okay.
Yeah, for sure.
But that's down the road.
Um, and then we've continued our lunchroom rental agreements and fair city for community blood rights. So they're there once upon a Tuesday, um and they seem to have like five to six people giving one probably in the five hours that they're there. Um, and then con rentals, uh that was a new revenue source. Those were really popular this year. Uh, and people really enjoyed them, uh so we'll bring them back next year.
Except after the hour, after hours.
So you can work uh do both for the pot opens or after hours.
You have your own private pool party.
Yeah, and if that uh brings some, it's based off of how many people because then uh based off if they have more than like twenty-five. And we need to bring an extra staff and then if it's over like fifty or seventy-five, then we bring another staff. And then you could um, then you have the opportunity to leave the concession building open. And then that's another staff, so there's like an added cost for that as well. So those were really popular, um, and people loved them because they could also bring them in floats. Uh, which we don't normally allow during our whole pool hours. Um, and then the village park and pond bathroom concession building was completed the first week of July.
And the fourth of July.
Mm-hmm. All of that for now, um, and then. Um, I think it's for next year, uh like I said, uh we will definitely envision a class method for all the parks. And build a maintenance plan surrounding the zones, uh continue to build a positive vision and one term name for community square. And then we continue to plan in it for the products out like. Recreation Program Fund, uh we implemented new programs for youth and adults. One being um pet CPR and E D, uh that was was pretty popular. It's about five. People minimum, um and they were proud to first date on their pets or their dogs. Um, and that's pretty popular because a lot of people love dogs. Um, we continue to work within our short call, uh and then that like I mentioned before in the past. That's a great opportunity because all of those our departments offer some classes that we would be able to offer. They call the cooking ones, so like the Saturday class at McLeg, that was pretty popular, um. We continue building partnerships and preparation to offer more programs. So that's with our like partnerships with like Tia, um Sky Harps, we're familiar with that. Um, and then, so it's really worked hard on. Um, building older adult programming and working with the senior club. Um, and offered opening senior center for like community center hours, so on the states afternoon that's open. So we need for people to come in, use the space, you know, play cards, things like that. And then then has really built up our time sheet program. Uh, we went from one day a week to two day a week, um and we have probably over twenty per, so so that one. Um. Major highlights, research and plan and needs assessment for programming, research anyways that subsides for revenue sources. Look at pricing changes and then continue to build community that's a program. Uh, so special offense fund, we facilitated six community events. Uh, we maintained sponsorships and gave new ones, uh the post boarding period was really generous this year. Um, I, and they did pretty much all of our special events for purpose, that's for July. Um, and then we maintained our mutual like Badger Meter F I S, uh prime financial, um and some of the other favorites as well. Um, we collaboratively worked with marketing and communications, coordination, coord- coordinator on public motion. Um, and then new, calling up just a week. Uh, the special events committee is working on the five K, ten K all in the fun run. Uh, I don't have the numbers of adds up today, but adds up last week, we had a hundred and five participants. And when we talked to the brace manager, um they said that they hoped, they would think that would jump significantly within the next week. Says people kind of start to see how the weather is trending. And then he even said that we could potentially get like some very last minute registration on that Friday or Saturday. So we're really excited about those numbers considering that. Five K, ten K option has been kind of dormant in frontier a couple of years.
My wife and kids will be there, so if you wanna join us, feel free.
Who's there?
No.
Anyone wants to run, my son, so I don't have to feel free.
I can, I will not keep up with him. I I cannot run anymore. Yeah.
It is one side still of all, but.
I haven't seen that in a lot of anybody saying.
Okay, major highlights, um like I said, sponsorships, um called from partnerships. Um, and so we really need to continue to um build and maintain those. Um, and then if that's sustainability and those special events fund, um. Cause we want to maintain the level of tax subsidy support. We don't wanna keep it bracing it, um. Uh, though we really wanna make sure that it's right reliable strategies. Um, that we can continue giving the, you know, level of service that we're providing at those community events. Any question?
No, I'm sorry, count the time.
Hi. Um, so a couple of twenty twenty-five accomplishments is that we continue to meet all our statutory mandates. Um, which is a lot, um, it's more, many more than the number of staff we have. Um, but that includes, you know, commitment ability, prevention and control, all the things listed here, happy to go into detail, but it it hasn't changed. Which is the good thing, I suppose.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, but we're really, we're poking along, we're hanging in there. Um, we also have really good um stability in staffing, so perhaps Danny, because I think that's really hard. And this is um marketing, uh we did have one individual move by state, so um. You know, we missed her, but we're also gonna probably stay some, because we're gonna hire more community staff, which is I think maybe on the next slide. Some of our twenty twenty-six plans.
Might be, do you want me to go there?
Yes, please.
Alright.
So some forthcoming things, um we did, there was a little bit of creativity that had to get baked into the twenty twenty-six budget for the department. Um, I think there was a little bit of a teaser from Chief Whitaker earlier, um but in a nutshell. The health department has had, including our COVID grants that expired, so those were thoughtful spent, but they're gone. Um, we're down two hundred thousand dollars. So that was largely planned for, but um about forty-eight thousand was unplanned for. Um, and that is just common with administration. So doing some, some creative problem solving. Um, in July, I touched base with the village managers and city administrator, um to sort of give them a high-level overview of what. I needed to build that staff. I asked for a thirteen percent increase, which is way more than what is baked into the current. Um, intergovernmental agreement, um and then, you know, through negotiation, it's really interesting problem solving and perhaps. Um, some increase of our environmental health licensing fees, which um I'm confident that that will happen. It just has to go through all of the courts, so it's not a simple solution. Uh, that we landed at the four point one four, which is the the maximum that I'm able to ask for without having to open up any agreement. Or get a special request, um with not too many changes. The increase um for our year this year is about five thousand dollars. Um, I think that that's perhaps one of the real challenges is that when the contributions to the health department are, you know. Ten percent of fire, it's just harder for me to build that um next egg over time. It just is slower growth, right? It's like if you make twenty grand and get a five percent raise, it's a lot less than if you make hundred thousand dollars and pay the five percent. It should take a little longer to catch up. Um, so we have a lead staff and a lead budget. All right, just checking my notes here, and then, um, so a couple of good things that also happened since this slide was produced. Um, I am interviewing for that staffing adjustment. I have a bunch of amazing candidates, so that's really good news. Um, the FET grant, which is our public health emergency preparedness grant, right, um has been. Really hippie, we got. We had a lot of sort of cuts, uh and then we had to do two budgets because they're like, what if you might get funded? So we did two budgets and then we did one budget and now we're back to one budget, but we got all the money back. Except for the first cut, so it's very tricky, but we, we got on top, it was just kind of weathering a storm. Um, so we'll increase those like fees. We're really just trying to get creative with our revenue. I think that that's kind of like the theme of um what everyone's trying to do, right? There's just not enough money. Um, we requested additional support from Milwaukee County, um. I'm confident that if they lose there, we get about thirty-one thousand dollars that supports the case manager. Um, but in this, here's the application, we were able to provide a lot of data, right? We have, it's not just like, hey, can you pay us money to support a big manager because we know it's a need here? Now we're like, here's what's happened and here's the progress. And so uh I think that's meaningful and have really good relationship with the company. Um, we're seeking additional donors. I don't know how, where you all are, but I did start in July. I had five oh one two three for North Shore Health Department Foundation, um because. Um, corporations and foundations don't generally want to give to general ops. For government funded, that's not what they are excited to pay for. So a foundation that has a slightly different or connected mission, um I got my first grant today.
Oh, great.
So I got a little change from uh the Red Pole. And repeat.
Okay.
Okay, so it's working. It'll just like help those gen ops. And then again, we're just doing our best and maintaining that staffing and services. I think one of the things that we'll do in early twenty-six is to just meet with all the village managers. And kind of talk about what their priorities are as we sort of weather the storm of sort of unknown funding from the federal government. Um, but I also am at a low in this, uh my personal costs are down. You know, we have some other reduced expenses because we have a renewed building. So our rent is down a little bit, our um maintenance is up and we're we're saving for when and if that stuff was haywire. But um and planning for, I think Chief mentioned some of those like capital improvements that I have planned in advance for, we're saving for that now. But um, yeah, I think overall, it was, it felt a little rough from July and August, but really optimistic.
I just wanna give Becky kudos. She went through twenty-some alternatives for the managers to consider because of the significance of the grant funding. But so it took a lot of energy for Becky to do that, but that's where she was navigating a lot of community politics.
Hmm.
And so I appreciate her doing that. But yeah, I think we're getting close on the resolution with community case manager. I know I've been talking with Chief Whitaker about some potential savings with his I T contract and that too. So there's a, there's some alternatives that we can figure out to get us there.
We're just really not ready to give up on it because we're, you know, we, the, it's been through a year and a half, right? I think the task started out, or sorry, April first of twenty-three, is that right? Twenty-four, sorry, twenty-one.
Twenty-four.
Um, so it took a little while looking up and running and I just think it would just, it would be a loss to to give up this early. Um, so I'm really thankful that there was some sticking power because it really did take a lot to sort of fill. We really did these things together, but that's okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, happy to take questions. First to you, answer.
Well, just curious, how healthy is the North Shore? Uh, related to COVID, the meeting with all these people in our place.
No West Nile.
We have one case of West Nile, um but we are, you know, we're at Edison and Fire, right? Good for that case in the North Park, um, we are older than Milwaukee County. But because we're invested in Milwaukee County, it's actually a really interesting case, like I have the same situation whenever I turn to the city of Edison, it's in the county online. But Edison is healthier than largely a lot of the county and we have the same situation in the North Park. Right, we have a low Medicaid population, um we have um a higher. Um, gross income, that's one of the people, yes, uh we just have more money and. Generally healthier people, more like over Zaki County in the North Shore. So we're logged in, we are in Milwaukee County, but we, we see the data if that makes sense.
Yeah.
I have a question. Do we, do we have any B for service?
Yeah, so we're looking to increase our environmental health fees, so that all of our license.
Kind of thing for who?
We will, yeah, you name it. We're gonna try about that by fifteen percent, which we, in what Tyler mentioned, I kind of uh. Proposed lots and lots of solutions. We landed at fifteen, um. And I think that'll leave us pretty competitive with the rest of the region and the way I think, I mean, I know, but that'll leave us, I did, you did the research. You're not just pulling us out of the air, um, but it'll give us another twenty-eight thousand dollars, not huge. But it does build these gaps that were kind of created by um funding at a better level. The one thing that's a little tricky about raising those fees is that all those fees have to go back into the program. So it's not, not the best solution, but um it, we get a little relief on the levy or in other. it, we get a little relief on the levy or in other ways, but it's always a lot of kind of orchestration, but it all has to feed back into the part of the agent contract with the, uh, debt cap.
When people get licensed in the North Shore, they can not create who plus in all of the seven misbands.
Correct, if they come into the license, we aren't as well.
Okay.
Cause we're all enforcing the same code.
All right, other questions? Thank you.
Thanks for supporting us.
Thanks Becky. Capital, I mean, we've spent multiple meetings talking about capital, so just as a reminder, those are the projects. We had a slight decline in the levy support, just based on all the, we'll get to the debt fund, but that's, remember, a pretty big increase on the levy and just some other things like fire, so that gave some help and support. Otherwise, as TIP, you know, once a year, early in the year, we go through all the TIP performance with all views, we'll do that again as we kick off twenty six. Um, but as a reminder, tid two is done, uh, tid three is performing well, still subsidizing tid four. Uh, but, uh, tid four had its first positive year in a long, long, long time. So we are making, uh, some really good progress there. And then tid five and tid six are newly created, so there's really not much on that as of now. Okay, and then, oh, where are you on? For the debt service fund, um, here, this is where, once again, we're seeing that big jump because of a lot of debt that was issued back in eighteen and nineteen. So about a thirteen percent increase, and this should be one of the last major jumps we see in quite, quite a while. Um, and I don't think there's a, a note that's expiring this budget cycle, at least I didn't see any. All right, Matthew, our wonderful recycling fund.
The last meeting, I think I stole some of my own thunder out of some of these, uh, but recycling fund, big thing was we have GFL in here and we approved our contract extension with them. Um, all on the, the refuse side was really remaining the same, just CPI increases. Our big increase was on, um, recycling side of things. Um, they explained, uh, what that increase was, that's now upgraded into our budget. Um, and so we are looking at a user fee increase at eighty dollars has been held constant. I think it's been like twenty years. Also, yeah, it's been an extremely long time. Yeah, and I will end over, for sure, I've been here thirteen, so over thirteen, and I was trying to peel back for records, I think it's been twenty years since we increased that at eighty dollars. Okay, so it's due, now there's two, twofold on why that's going to be. One is our contract readable with GFL, so we had automatic increases in fees for this next five years. An immediate bump in twenty six. The second though, is some debt that's coming off of our building, correct? Isn't that the other?
We're just charging.
We're charging more to the recycling fund to account the debt cutting off of our new building that we built in twenty nineteen. Those are the two, you know, reasons why this increase is warranted. And just, gee, it hasn't caught up in twenty years, well, cost increase in people in years. The, the recycling center alone, um, since we've been over in that new building now for five years, I mean, just what a great addition and humongous, um, uh, more service that we provide residents over there. It used to be open, really, I'll say two full days a week, it was like a half a day on Tuesday, a half a day on Thursday, and then you had Saturday afternoon. What's that?
You had a staff person that worked.
And we did have a staff person that used to over there. Uh, now, although it's open twenty, well, not twenty four seven, but seven AM to seven PM, seven days a week, three hundred sixty five days. So, you know, one great addition of that. So I think those two things, it is time, Derek took a look at this and it looks like it's getting increased to, um, eighty dollars to a hundred and forty. That sounds like a really big jump, but when you're able to explain this, you know, it's really not that big.
And the intent too is for us not, I mean, we, it's not, a fee like this, you don't want to play with every other year. So if you're wanting to pick a number that for some time, you can, now, not twenty years. But then we can remain consistent for some time.
Derek and I were talking about this, and I'm sure Tyler would agree, the logical check in point on when to look at this fee is when our contract with GFL is up, so that's like a five year window. So our next contract regable will be up in twenty thirty, that's when this would get, you take a peek.
And probably, they can exact on our tax bill, we'll pay separate.
That comes.
It's a special charge.
That's what I, okay.
That's a bad.
Well, how does, how does that compare with other communities?
Well, that is an extremely tough question to answer, so because every community is structured differently in how you do recycling fees. So some of them are just baked into your property texts, a lot of them are, City of Milwaukee, that comes on your utility bill. Uh, so impossible to answer.
Yeah, a lot don't even have the service level that we have in here too. So it's also, even if we did find, you know, a, a similar structure fee, very likely they don't have the same service level.
This is different than what I date the furniture. Yeah, like the stormwater fee and the sanitary sewer fee, water fees, those are very easy to compare with. The recycling fee, um, is, it'd be like the street lighting fee. Impossible to come here.
Ready Dana? Okay.
And this is going to affect January?
Yes, so, uh, this next tax bill is letting that, as well, for twenty twenty six, so I think it's due January thirty, thirty first of, uh, twenty six.
Are we gonna do a pre announcement?
Yes. Yeah, we'll do some kind of awareness to let them know before it goes on.
Um, so twenty twenty five, we pretty much, uh, that's one of the other, the kind of accomplishment to just remain steady and kind of stay where we were, um, it's been a little difficult to get a load of materials starting this year. Um, looking at books, for example, prices didn't increase for us, but just physically getting them, um, is where you'd wait and then you'd get a book the day it came out, it's now taking two months, um, with the vendors we work with. So just finding creative ways to get things faster, even though it's still slower than it used to be. Um, we still managed to have a very strong collection of books in addition compared to others on our side, the team has been stopped. Um, we're very proud of that, we still have the largest four point O man puzzle collection in the system, the second largest video in the system. Um, one of the top local attraction ones, we are one of only two libraries in the system that circulate cake pans. Um, and our Tony collection, um, Molotovs is the only library that's larger than ours, so we're second to their collection as well. Um, we are continuing to work with the volunteers, tools, staff and events and programs, we have a lot more. Um, something I'll talk about with the next one, that our youth librarian is now full time. So we can do more with the schools, we have a lot more programs starting this fall with them, where either we're alternating, so an event will take place at the library, and then the next one's with the school, and the library or the school, um, or doing things like that. And trying to work with the staff and figuring out how to get the students back to work. Um, so a lot more of that's going to start this fall. And, um, so I just mentioned our youth librarian is now full time, we had a pretty significant retirement this year. But after she left, I was able to kind of reorganize job duties and not only increase our MTE, but still make it, we're not spending as much on staff right now. Um, so that's given us more people to help man the desk, more people to do programs, more people to do all behind the scenes stuff. So that's been huge for us. And, um, I know some of my staff is going to watch this recording later and they're going to yell at me again, but it is official. And I said it officially, June next year, I want us to open earlier, we have the people now. And once I have them trained and we all kind of understand the new reorganization, I want us to open earlier. I don't know, but I, our drive through opens at nine and most people don't realize that the building doesn't open until ten. There are other licenses in the system than that open at nine, there's one that opens at eight. We have no reason not to now that we have more people, so want to do it. I'm going to add you on hidden correction items, I kind of touched upon that, but the Tony correction, the cake pan. Circulating items like this is one of the reasons we are still delaying the library. That for our side gets one of the higher reciprocal borrowing, um, seats here. And I did just get, Tyler doesn't know, I just got our records for twenty twenty seven and we increased the.
No way, exactly.
Things like this. Tony's, the Tony's.
And the twenties are different figures.
Do you remember Ted Ross, when he would read you a story? So Tony, you have a special box that is indestructible. It's covered in fabric, you can literally chuck it down the stairs and it won't break. And then made off of what little figure is on top, which also makes it fun for kids. Um, so if you've been old off of Frozen, you have been read stories and some songs from Frozen. So it's kind of like a slightly more interactive audio book. They're insanely popular, insanely popular. And then last week, we actually renewed for, after today, we did four new attraction classes. And we have another collection that I'm not going to talk about tonight, but it'll, uh, be divvied in there. Week, we will be the only library in the county. I think the closest one in the cross. It'll be just us, and I'm very excited for it, so we're all going to be done getting done with that. Um, so for twenty twenty six, no real budget changes, like I said, the staff retirement, I was able to get more staff, but it didn't cost as much, um, reciprocal arms is actually increasing again. And the only potential budget impact will be, um, we need a generator. So I'm still waiting on a final quote, but Derek has kind of kept an eye on the balance that the library has that we built up. So we should be able to do it, um, it's either going to be a generator or it's going to be a battery backup for the cell phone, but I think we're leaning towards the generator option. And that would cover the whole building, including our courses. Um, my goal to help the library open an hour earlier, I'm fairly confident we can do that now. And then just continue expanding those unique collections, it's important first to have books and all those other things that people need to learn and grow. But they also have the experience and, and learning how to do things, and also, in my opinion, this is important. So just adding to those unique things that they can take home.
Where are we with the lease with the, um, the girls?
Yeah, we're still waiting their response, they mentioned kind of, uh, a preview, it looked pretty favorably, but knowing that we had some time yet, they were working on some negotiations with some more time sensitive areas. So, uh, but we should be receiving a response from them fairly soon, because it was like January or February of next year that it was. So.
Isn't it two or three year?
It's actually like a five year, at least. So I think what I proposed to them was no, because originally when we did the first go around, there was no rate changes at all. So I proposed keeping no rate changes for the first two years and then starting to bump it and increase every following year. Just to give them forewarning that we can't continue having a no rate increase.
Right.
Yeah.
And if we do get the generator, would you cost that portion of that? To them, that they would benefit from it?
No, well, because that's part of their rent or fees, so it really depends on what, what the, what the library chooses as a generator. Is it just going to impact the spot in the library or everything else, so?
The one I think I personally would move towards, as long as the money adds up and I have a discussion with you and Derek, um, it would help them in the sense that they wouldn't lose all their lights, their emergency lights would stay on. If it was planner, minimal heating would still be on, so pipes wouldn't freeze in our space and bust their space. But it wouldn't keep their computers running, um, things like that would still be off, like they would in our area, but they would still be managing, and they'd still have emergency lights, and still get out in the building safely. Their electric, their, their door would still work, if that's electric, um, we found that out with this last flood, with the last flood when we didn't have power, they couldn't get in our door. So their door would work, their pipes would freeze in walls. So they would be better, so anything about it, I kind of see that as just a, we should just do it. So if their pipe burst, I'm still paying for it, so I'd rather their pipes didn't burst.
Thanks Dana.
Any additional questions? Uh, first, the Johnson.
Yeah, this is a clarification, so the tenant in the building. The tenant in the building paid rent to the library or to the village?
It goes into the library fund. And you as a village, uh, part of the levy is set aside for the library. And then the live, we can't tell the library how to spend it, they get to, the library board, which two of our five members are here, get to say and how those funds are divvied up amongst the library itself, so. So since I've been here, you know, I've holding, uh, the commitment of whatever the COLA increases is, that's what we would propose as the levy increase.
Is that building new or is it, was it refurbished?
It was refurbished, so, um. Twenty years old, it used to be abandoned that whole.
Yeah, just over twenty.
And, yeah, that was like two thousand one.
It would have been completely reded.
Yeah, it was a bank, it was, uh, uh, this continental bank, it was Westbury Bank, it was a health place. Opened like two thousand one.
Other questions today? Good night, thank you.
Thanks Kim. Oh, here's my mic, okay, these next ones are pretty quick here, Strela Fund was a donation that we got years ago. Uh, slowly depleting the fund every year, about three thousand is given to Parks and Rec and, uh, Library for Programming. And it really doesn't change year to year, but it's there, okay? What's that?
Is it in a separate, like, empty spare account, or is just there?
I mean, we have it set up as a special revenue fund, similar to the others. Uh, Derek, I know, Derek, is there any special rules about that account?
I don't think so.
I don't believe.
So it's not something that we can get into the soft up that would increase the amount? It's just in our, you know, operation.
No.
How much was the original, uh, donation?
No, it was higher than that, it was, was it hun- hundred, I was gonna say around a hundred. That's how much we have remaining.
Do you remember when, what year?
Um, if you, it's on the budget page in the narrative, it's in there, I just don't have it on the top of my head.
Land twenty twelve.
Thank you Derek. Any other questions? First, the farmers market, uh, market management program continues to grow and they continue to secure sponsorships. Um, right now, we're in the process of, of trying to move, uh, well, we did move the market off the street into a safer location as far as the parking lot, but as we continue to look at for citizens and other future development, trying to find a, a larger spot. Uh, Kerry's done a wonderful job coordinating that, coordinating that, but because of that, we have a pretty long, like, queue list of probably other vendors who would love to operate there, so, um, it's been great for our businesses in the area, a lot of uh, employees from FIS, Tapco and Badger. Uh, employees from FIS, Tapco, and Badger Meter walk to experience the market. And we get a lot of people outside of Brown Deer that come because there's not a market on a Wednesday. Um, so it's been a really nice opportunity to get people to experience Brown Deer. So. Um, I've been really impressed with what they've done. They continue to do a bunch of different programming. They've done some like winter markets. Um, and uh, uh, great, um. Oh geez, I think they had somewhere between fifteen hundred or almost two thousand guests for the dog days of summer. Where they had like an obstacle course and that. So just really clever programming. Yeah, uh, related to that. And they'll have special guests too, like, you know, represented from the county or state legislators and that attend as well. So, but from year to year, that doesn't really change a whole lot. You know, uh, I honestly, we're probably having a lot of Kerry's time. Uh, more than we allocate there, but the, the fund would not balance the amount of time she does. So the general fund picks up a lot of that. But probably in a perfect world, we would have more of her times paid out of this fund if we had revenue to pay for it. Public safety fund, uh, this is pretty similar every year too. Uh, this is revenue from Rogers. Uh, that's part of their development agreement. The revenue is just over three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And then, uh, Walmart, Derek, we're moving Walmart over to this fund too, correct? And the school resource officer, thank you. So all the overtime spent on the Walmart agreement is there as well. Okay? Matthew, you want to summarize? I know it doesn't change much, but the street lighting funds, anything to know?
No, street lights are status quo, um, really no changes whatsoever since we converted to LED, uh, about four years ago.
And no issue with people mounting it?
No, I mean, Derek, I mean, generally no.
Okay. Tourism fund, um, this, we used, um, to pay for the recreation center study. Uh, so that fund balance is somewhere now around seventy thousand or so. Uh, but we still have a pretty, you know, good sized fund balance. Uh, don't anticipate anything in the next year. Uh, to be spent on that, but just know that we have fund balance at any tourism activities that we can spend it on. Revenue will only come in if we eclipse our, I think it was around twenty ten. Our two, um, hotel tax revenue that we received, which it was right around four hundred and seventy-five thousand. Um, so we are below that. So that's where we, we get it in our general fund to, to be able to utilize. But if we do eclipse that, that's where those revenue dollars will go into the tourism fund. Okay? All right, huh, you have patiently been on Zoom. You want to unmute yourself, Tom? Are you able to give the update on the water utility fund? We'll give Tom a moment there because I, I know Tom has been on for a while.
Uh, yes, I'm here. Can you hear me? Oh, can you hear me?
Tom, I, I saw you unmute yourself, but we can't hear you.
Okay, hang on.
Oh, that's a good question.
Well, I'm here, but you can't hear me, huh?
I can hear you, Tom.
Okay.
I think it's something in the boardroom.
Yep, that sounds right.
All right, try talking again, Tom.
Okay, can you hear me?
Just a second, Tom. No. What? Tom, try talking now.
Okay, can you hear me? Nate said he can hear me, so.
I can hear him, but I don't know what it's through. This is second time. I'll check it out. Tom, keep talking so we know if we're doing something good or bad.
Well, I can hear you guys, no problem.
Okay, now.
I can hear you guys, no problem.
Getting to the. Say something else.
Okay, so Nate can hear me as well.
There we go, there we go. Good. We just had to change the speaker. Okay, go ahead.
All right. So our water utility budget for twenty twenty six is pretty similar to our past years. Uh, the one, uh, change is that we did not include, um. A rate increase for twenty twenty six. Um, our simplified rate cases that we've done, uh, have run out. And so the next rate case that we do will have to be a, uh, full rate case. And the city of Milwaukee or Milwaukee Water Works has just filed for a full rate case, um. This month, and so. We'll probably see an increase for Milwaukee potentially sometime in the second quarter of twenty twenty six. And at that time, we can either do a purchase water adjustment clause, or if we want, we could, uh, start to. Do a conventional rate case, uh, for later in the year, which is kind of what we're thinking right now, is that, uh, with. Waukesha Water coming on board as a wholesale community. I think the increase from Milwaukee Water Works isn't going to be as bad or as high as what we've seen in the past. And so, um, I think it's going to be a, a pretty small increase right now. And then, um. You know, we're looking at increasing our water main. Replacement project in twenty twenty seven, and so towards that end of twenty six is when we're probably going for a conventional rate case. Uh, that'll probably kick in first quarter of twenty twenty seven. So we really didn't increase, uh, any of our revenues, uh, by a lot. In fact, they went down a little bit. Uh, for our revenues for our metered, uh, sales. Uh, we did show a pretty big increase for our contributed capital. And that's not money or revenue that we're getting in. That's the infrastructure that's going to get put in, uh, as part of the, um. Target, uh, development. So they're going to be putting in, uh. You know, water utility, water main in there, and then they'll contribute that back to the utility. So we have to show that as a contributed capital as part of our revenue. Um, because it'll then hit our books and then it'll be paid out as part of our pilot. Um, the rest of our, uh, O and M costs are pretty much the same. Uh, we don't really have a lot, uh, this year as far as any maintenance that we're planning on. Uh, we did go through our capital, uh, the last time that I was there. So our maintenance, uh, has pretty well stayed. Um, you know, within, um. I would say. Within that five to six percent increase that we've seen, ours is a little higher this year. Um, but, um, mainly because like I said, we're, we're going to have a little bit more in our pilot that we'll have taken out this year. With the additional, uh, infrastructure that gets put in place. With that, is there any question? We did, we did take this to the, um, water commission last week. And the commission did approve the budget for, um, public, uh, presentation. So, um, next step is taking it to a, a public hearing.
I see in your budget, I have sanitary sewer. There's reduction in salaries and wages. Did you lose somebody and then hire somebody new?
Yeah, that's the sewer, that's not water utility, that's sewer. Yeah, we'll get to that. Yeah. Yeah, we'll get to that.
Yeah, I only deal in the stuff that you can drink, so I keep my hands clean.
Any, any questions?
Tom, thanks for your patience. Enjoy the program, okay?
Hey, take care.
Yeah, thanks. Okay. Uh, and then we will go to, we have, uh, stormwater and then sewer, and then that's it. So take us home, Matthew.
Um, so again, some of this recovered last time when I was presenting, but stormwater utility, I'm pretty much satisfied. I mean, we're, we're kind of shifting some gears here, um, towards, we were going to look at some self-re造restoration work. But, you know, mother nature threw us a curve ball and we have to pivot and are focusing all of our efforts now. On building of the North Forty Seventh Street. Over. So that's going to kind of take precedent and then shift all sorts of projects that we had approved and everything in the CIP. So in, in next year's twenty twenty six, you know, the twenty thirty CIP, you'll see a lot of the projects kind of shift around. Because we had to make way for the Stormwater Seventh Street. So that's kind of the big news in stormwater utility. Uh, we're projecting a five percent utility increase. Uh, last year was a big, that was like a. Last two years, we were eight, eighteen percent. So we're getting away from those big increases and now we're, we're down to five percent.
Go to sewer?
That's the, uh, least sewer. So we did, uh, as President Montgomery alluded to, we did have a retirement in our sewer. And we're going to be back to in that position. We're not going to have just a stand of a lone sewer operator anymore. That we historically had had. That's what Dana Faulkner was, was, uh, his role. Within retiring, we're going to kind of use, um, prostrate a bunch of different individuals that are going to kind of merry-go-round or, or shift into that position. Be one kind of main guy, Dan Singer, but he's going to be also doing every other couple of horse task as well. And then we have a couple of other guys that are interested that are also going to fill that hole. So. I like doing things more that way because if there's an emergency and I have more people to call on and. Everybody kind of knows what's going on, then we can use them elsewhere too in our. Public works operations, you know, like snow problem first, Dana wasn't snow problem. This, now our, our team will. So, um, I think this is a, a better fit. Um, it's a good plan going forward. Project wise, um, we'll have, now that we'll have a, a line job that will go on this fall. Typically, I do those fall, about winter to the spring, to the vicious sewer, blue trucks in neighborhoods. Um, we will be doing a private property I and I project that's using MMSD funding. We submitted, um, a grant application, which is board approved at the last meeting. Uh, MMSD, their committees met and find out how much dollars we got. I was told on the sign that we're going to get fully funded for all projects, so that's good. Um, and that's up at the lift station, uh, the impound estate. Yep, that sixty seventh street neighborhood, there's eighteen homes that feed into this lift station. So that's step one. We're going to replace all the sewer lanterns up there. And then, uh, once that's done, we'll line all the sewer veins. And then thirdly. Um, to send the CIP, we're going to end up replacing that aging lift station.
Well, yeah. Questions?
Uh, related to FEMA, but I hope you can see, we're giving money for now.
Well, the last I heard and Tyler and Chief, so we met with FEMA, um. Here, that was now about three weeks.
Three, I was just gonna say three weeks.
Three weeks ago. All right, so FEMA representatives were here, um, Wisconsin, you were just managing was here and the county. Um, they viewed our project. We submitted all of the costs that they requested. They accepted it. But that's where we're at right now. We're in a holding pattern to see who can actually help get the money. So our project has been validated, but I just don't know.
Yeah, but we don't have the, we don't have the funds.
You don't have the funds?
Do you have a request going in?
The amount?
Two point nine million?
Yeah, mo- and most of that is on the Bridge Culver on Forty Seventh Street.
Okay, oh, sorry. Yeah, there was seven total projects. Two of them were not accepted. That was the.
Anything?
Building in.
Yeah, yeah.
Already in the flood.
But, yeah, anything that our, our property insurance won't cover for the library. Then that would be applied to FEMA. Um, and, and then there's some other things that they'll look at, potentially covering costs off. But those are, it like, when we did all the dumpsters. And that cleanup that was accepted, that'll be all paid for.
We're just kind of waiting to see like how the process is to actually get this money, right?
Right.
Kind of work. That, that's the holding pattern that.
Right.
But the. The municipality money and the resident money is come out of the same fact, I think. That thirty million.
No, I don't, I think those are different. I don't, I don't think those are the same.
See, I'm not sure. I thought it was all one.
Is it?
I, 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 I could hear off.
All right, well, well, we will look into, we will look into that and get back to you on that because I don't have that answer today.
I heard on the news, there were one of the FEMA representatives, he knows only thirty million, and they said that it goes beyond that, they will increase.
What you guys?
I'm just saying what she said.
That, that's what on my mind, like, oh, we should have.
Yeah, for the sake of the, because this is on the, the twenty-six budget, so. What, what I would recommend is, uh, when we have a firm update, I'll have an email on that for all of you, okay? But right now, we just, in three weeks, we haven't, and there's obviously with everything going on. At the federal level, I, you know, it's probably part of the reason, but when we hear more, you'll get an email from me on that.
Yeah, I think the, the county admitted a projection of cost. With the staff. They approved her. So. Let's hope it opens up. Anyway. No questions for.
Anything else on the budget? Otherwise, November seventeenth will be the public hearing on the budget and we'll work with staff in getting that public notice out.
Hey. So with that. Yeah, we're hit item number seven. Reassessing the closed session, we need a motion to the resource enter closed session. Pursuant to Wisconsin's that nineteen point eight five. One E for the valid reason E. For the deliberating or negotiating the first thing that part of practice, investing in part of funds or conduct unspecified part of business. We're now competitive for our given reasons required closed session, considering the rate. The negotiation of the lease agreement with F Street at eight seven to five North Deerwood Drive and sale of municipal property. Is there a motion?
Yeah. I'm going to re-assess from closed session.
Is there? Excuse me. It's been moved by Justin Greaves and second by, Dusty Thompson to move in closed session. On those.
We, we need a roll call.
Oh. Dusty Booker. Dusty Woods, uh, Dusty Horns, uh, Dusty Johnson, uh, Dusty Greaves.